I know, I should go down.
We didn't start yet.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. This is the open public meeting of the Neptune Township Board of Education. In accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975, adequate advanced written notice of the meeting was made by posting the schedule of meetings in the main floor lobby of the Board of Education Administrative Offices and by delivery to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Neptune Township Municipal Clerk. Advanced electronic notice has been made on the district's website consistent with Bylaw 0164.6. In order to abide by the Open Public Meetings Act, Board of Education members may use their digital devices to follow the agenda, report out for meetings, and to view agenda background materials, not to communicate with each other or anyone outside of the meeting. Fire exits are located in the direction indicated. In case of fire, you will be signaled by bell and/or public address system. If so alerted, please move in a calm orderly fashion to the nearest exit. Postings have been placed on the bulletin board for everyone's use. Please do not remove these postings. You may obtain three copies of the documents from the district website or purchase copies by writing the Board of Education office. During the public session of this meeting, parties having comments are requested to address the president. The public is advised that in accordance with Bylaw 0168, an unofficial audio recording of this meeting is being made. Pursuant to State Statute NJSA 26:3D17 and Neptune Township Board of Education Policy Regulation 7434, no smoking is permitted on Board of Education property. As a reminder, Neptune Township School District is a community for all learners where we value opportunity, diversity, and accountability. Ms. De La Salle, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Hubbard?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Morgan?
Here.
Ms. Perrier?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. West?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Madam President.
Thank you. Please also note administration that is present. At this time, we encourage you to join us in a moment of silence. We would like to remember our longtime staff member, Tommy Walsh, at this time. Thank you. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, my nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening again, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. I do want to take a brief moment to remind us of the example that we set, not just for each other, but for our children and the young people who may be listening, watching, and learning from our actions. Passionate disagreement and strong opinions are welcome in any democracy. And this board values community input deeply. However, personal attacks, name-calling, and hostile language do not reflect the kind of respectful dialogue we strive for. When we engage in that kind of behavior, we risk modeling it to our children, showing them that disrespect is acceptable when emotions run high. Let's remember that our words matter. Let's choose to disagree with dignity, express concerns constructively, offer solutions, and demonstrate the kind of civility we want our kids to carry out in their schools, homes, and in our communities. I'm going to thank you in advance for helping to create a space that is respectful, productive, and worthy of the young people we all care about. Vice President Thompson, can you move our minutes, please?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. It is resolved that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting/NJSBA training of June 25, 2025, and regular meeting of June 25, 2025. So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Vice President Thompson, seconded by Ms. Perrier. Board members, are there any questions? Ms. De La Salle, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Perrier?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Dr. Crater, our superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to congratulate 6th grader Oliver Nunez, who was the county winner of the Anniversary American Revolutionary Essay Contest. Congratulations to our 6th grader and Dr. Apoku and staff. I also want to congratulate our teachers and students who participated in our summer music program. Last night was the concert. These students worked very hard for three weeks, five days a week, and they learned to play an instrument. If they haven't played an instrument, sometimes they try a new instrument. Last night's concert was amazing, and 110 students participated. It was wonderful. Congratulations to all of them. Congratulations to the staff who are running extended school year under the direction of Ms. Allegra, who's in the front here. So that program is running smoothly, and our kids seem to be very happy. And it's soon coming to an end, Katie?
August 7.
Next week, okay. Also, we've had five students who have received special distinction for their success on AP exams. They had special notations. One student who received the Scholar with Honor Award. That is granted to those students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all of those exams and scores of three or higher on four. Many of you know we've been focusing on making, increasing the numbers in our AP courses and increasing the number of students who get a three or greater on those exams, which earns them college credit. So congratulations to Mr. Decker and all of those teachers as well, and enjoy the rest of your summer.
Please join the board in congratulating all those students that Dr. Crater just mentioned, and the staff as well. Thank you. We will move into our public forum. Oftentimes, it may appear to our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment and in many cases by unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the superintendent of school. If the superintendent of schools is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to members of the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with administration and the superintendent to assure that members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is then presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. All personnel motions are at the recommendation of the superintendent. All agenda postings are available for public review. In rare instances, matters are presented to the Board of Education for discussion at the same meeting where final action may be taken. Time will be allotted now for public comment. Each speaker will be given three minutes when recognized by the presiding officer. Individuals wishing to address the board shall be recognized by the presiding officer and shall give their names, addresses, and group, if any, that they represent. Although the board encourages public participation, it reserves the right through its presiding officer to terminate remarks to and/or by any individual not in keeping with the proper conduct of an efficient meeting. The board will not respond to questions during the public portion of this meeting involving the employment, appointment, termination of employment, negotiations, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of the performance of promotion or disciplining of any specific prospective or current employee. Prior to opening the floor, I'm going to make a public statement on behalf of the board. There has been a great deal of social media attention given to the recent tax increase. Over the past six years, our district has experienced a loss of more than $25 million in state and federal funding, while the Department of Education continues to shift the financial burden of public education to local taxpayers. In addition to making extensive cuts over the last several years, we have trimmed all accounts and managed to stay within the same budget dollar amount for that same time period. This is no longer feasible. We are facing a 25% increase in healthcare and prescription drug costs, a 30% increase in utility expenses, rising transportation costs, and the escalating tuition for charter schools, now totaling over $4 million annually. We are also responsible for extensive out-of-district placements for students requiring specialized services. The public was invited to a special meeting held on April 8 of this year to learn more about the district's financial situation. At that meeting, our superintendent, Dr. Crater, explained our limited options. Keep in mind that our buildings were built with Abbott funds and are not technically owned by the district. Any profit from the lease or sale of those buildings reverts to the School Development Authority. Although some members of the public have criticized the Board of Education for not making the unpopular or hard decisions, the decision to raise taxes beyond the cap is a hard decision. Without this tax levy increase, we would have had to cut 40 positions, cancel programs, provide less transportation, and increase our tax, our class sizes. This was also discussed at not only this year's budget hearing on April 30, but has been discussed each and every year since S-2 legislation was passed in 2018. For the past three years, we have also used the front page of our school scene, which is delivered to every home, to call your attention to our budget crisis. And we have asked you to contact your state legislators to demand an equitable funding formula. Despite what you may read in blogs, Neptune is not a failing district. I will repeat that. Neptune is not a failing district. Our students continue to achieve and grow in extraordinary ways. They are thriving in advanced placement and honors programs, earning college credit and preparing for their futures with the support of our highly skilled educators. We provide real-world experience for career exploration. And for the 10th consecutive year, we have been named the best community for music education, celebrating our commitment to the arts and to the whole child. We have built strong partnerships with major colleges and universities, providing our students with expanded opportunities, dual enrollment courses, and early access to career pathways. Our connections with local businesses and organizations continue to enrich our school and ensure that our students are deeply connected to our community. While our standardized test scores may not fully reflect the high expectations that we have set for ourselves, they are just one measure of student learning. They do not capture the deep, meaningful work that is happening in every classroom, every day, across our school district. Despite these pressures, our schools remain strong because of our dedicated teachers, administrators, support staff, administrators, and of course, this board as well. And we're doing that for the families and communities that we serve. We are seeing our students earn recognition at local, regional, and national levels for academic excellence, artistic talent, athletic achievement, and service to others. We remain focused on continuous improvement, responsible stewardship for our resources, and our unwavering commitment to provide a high-quality education for every student. We are proud of what we have accomplished and confident in the path forward because we know that success in education is not defined by a single test, but by the strength of the system, the passion of our people, and the opportunities that we create for our children. The floor is now open for public comment.
Good evening, board members.
Please turn the microphone on. I don't believe it's on. The switch up right at the top.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. My name is Debbie Terrell, and I live at 106 Willow Drive. I come to you tonight with a simple but very important request. I am proposing that the weight room at the high school be named in memory of Tom Walsh. Your former colleague of 40 years, a beloved coach, and my big brother. He passed away unexpectedly on June 30, just one day before his retirement. Coach Walsh was not only an educator, but a mentor and a friend to many. His fingerprints are on so many things in our community that many people don't know about because of his humility and his desire to keep focus on our students and not on himself, on himself. He volunteered countless hours with the football and wrestling teams and worked tirelessly in the weight room, making sure our students were supported and always felt welcome. The outpouring of memories that have come since my brother's passing is a testament to how deeply his impact was and will continue to be felt. He literally taught generations of Neptune students. The weight room was a special project for my brother, something he cared deeply about. He spent his time ensuring our students had the support they needed to learn and lift safely, including ensuring that the machines were in good working condition, even if he had to fix them himself. Scarlet fire blood runs strong in our family. My brother, my sister, and I are all graduates of Neptune High School, as is my husband and our three children, who all had Mr. Walsh as their driver's ed teacher. As I stated in the beginning of my comments, I am here on behalf of the thousands of students who were taught by Mr. Walsh to request that the weight room at the Neptune High School to be named in memory of Coach Tom Walsh. We, as a community, have so many valued educators that work every day to provide and protect our kids. And by doing this, you will show that we are a community that supports our educators right back. Thank you so much for your time.
On behalf of the board and the administration, we would like to again express our condolences. And we know what it took for you to come out and make that statement. And we will look into your request. And we do respect and honor the memory of your brother. So we do thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come forward.
Good evening. Joel Pompkin, 88 in Skip Avenue in Ocean Grove. And just as you said earlier, the taxes are a big issue in town. I realize it's not your fault. And it's, you know, and everybody points fingers at each other, whether it's the municipality, the school, the county, the state, or whatever. But the problem is, is I'm just going to spend part of my time just telling you my experience. In the past two years, my taxes have gone up over $10,000 in Ocean Grove. Out of that $10,000, over $7,200 went to the school. That's their portion. It's a lot, you know. Can't afford to stay there anymore. And as I know, the biggest problem is because of the assessments. And the assessments have been rising. The assessment pilot program, which they started 15 years ago in Monmouth County, and Neptune was part of that, what, in my opinion, is failure. Because what happens is that, as you know, it's based on sale prices of homes. Now, in Neptune, probably less than 5% of the homes sold at a higher price. And the automatic system that they use for assessments has affected 95% of the people that have been sold their home. My assessment has gone up 81% in two years. And just as many other people in the town, it's gone out of control. You know, people say, would I sell my house for what it's assessed at? And I say, not if I'm paying $24,000 in your taxes for a house on a 30-by-60-foot lot. So you can understand, you know, what's happening. And I know, you know, you're considering that. The problem is, is that I know you mentioned a lot of things that you've done to cut. Something has to be done, I know, to tighten belts a little bit. That's part of the thing which I would request. The other part which I'm requesting is that work with the town and the legislators. They have the power to put a limit on the assessments. The assessments that have gone up are really what's killing everybody's taxes. I'm sure every one of you have been affected by it. And, you know, they have the power to either limit it or suspend it for a year. As I said, going back 15 years ago, the assessment could either only go up or down by 15%. And then I look at this now, and I say, what happened to me with 81% in two years? So, you know, please, you know, you have the power to, you know, get out there and work with the town, the local legislators, and do this, you know, for everyone in Neptune. I realize that, I know my time is up. Just one second. You have a definite obligation. You're doing a great job with the children. But you also have an obligation to the taxpayers in Neptune.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pompkin. And we would also request, as you have charged us to reach out to the legislators, we're charging all of the community to do that as well.
Yes.
The louder the voice, the better the information received will be.
I agree.
You can see the nine of us at this table. It has to be you, your neighbors, your family, your friends.
You're right. And I expected to see this room packed tonight with people saying the same thing. But, you know, they're out there. They're on the internet. And we got to get them motivated.
We thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I'm Frank Mordecai, 547 Wayside Road, Neptune. I've been here in Neptune 61 in my 65 years. I'm here to echo my support for Tommy's sister. Mr. Hubbard, you know firsthand the human that Tommy was. I hope that you guys can really talk to Mr. Hubbard. He knows him firsthand. I was there coaching with him at one time. Our kid's your fourth generation Neptune graduates. My wife worked here. I've been a fire commissioner for 21 years here in town. I understand budgets. Have fun. It's not an easy thing. I know that. I was a teacher for 33 years. So I've been on all those sides. That you guys have to work out, and it's not, it's above your heads. It's the state mostly. But anyhow, I beg of you to consider naming that weight room after Tom. He's a great human being, one of the finest I ever met in my life. He gave selfishly for years and years and years to so many people. He held so many roles. He did so many things for nothing. You probably don't know, he did volunteer to coach for nothing the last couple of years, for nothing. Just for the love of the game, the love of the kids, dedication. I don't think it's going to be a huge expense, and I'm sure there's a lot of people out here who could come up with the money to put a sign up in that weight room. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alicia Simmons, Asbury Park. Right? I am coming, a former board member in Asbury Park, coming to show my support to the board and understanding the plight that you're in. Right? We are, we are tested, we are burdened by S-2 and tax levies. We're in a perfect storm, right? The perfect storm of S-2 that is set up purposely not to have anybody anywhere pleased. There is not a school district in the state that is pleased by S-2. Right? It is purposely meant, in my opinion, to cause controversy, to push for merger of school districts for people to be forced in. And the only one who profits from that merger and these mergers are insurance companies, joint consolidations, right? Personal business across the board, and that is completely legislative. Right? Then you're done. Then we're hit with a constant assessment for the last 15 years, year after year after year, that benefits no one but the township and legislators and a person that comes in to flip their property that does not plan to stay. You're in a perfect storm of controversy. And there's no choices when electricity is going up 30%, right? When food is going up every day, right? When we are overly burdened by just our day-to-day necessities, when transportation and gasoline has pushed us to the brink. So I understand exactly where you are. And we have to understand it is a mixture of kids and community, right? So I understand that it's not you, right? You don't make these laws. It is legislators, and it so happens that the legislator that is over us are the people making those laws, right? We don't have to look somewhere in Trenton. We look right here in District 11. And when we look right here, when we say, push, 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 right? Against the legislation, because there hasn't been any legislation to find us any kind of reprieve, any kind of help. We are three of the hardest hit in this district, right? Because I come from Asbury Park. But three out of the hardest hit in New Jersey from the S-2 bill are right here, Neptune, Asbury Park, and Freehold. There's only one, there's nowhere else where three districts in this space get hit so hard and the highest, right? We are also burdened by charter schools like no other. And I'm not against a charter school. I'm pro-good school. Neptune happens to be a good school, right? As a former Neptune alumni, but graduate of Asbury Park, right? I understand. And Mr. Walsh was my gym teacher and driver's ed teacher. That is crazy. Understand that we have to come together, and it is not you. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Gouli, 318 Prospect Avenue. 13 years ago, Joanne and I moved to Neptune. We purchased the childhood home of Jack Armstrong, one of your own.
My classmate.
Baseball player. Terrific. I grew up in a working-class family in Brick Township, one of seven kids. Didn't have a lot of money. Didn't have a lot of money. My father could not hold a job. The reason I mention this is, yes, we had it tough. But I decided to be a student. I did not want to have the same life my dad had. Very simple. It kind of opened my eyes. And I said, I'm going to, I'm going to study every single day. I went to community college, got an electronics degree. I got a job working for Eastman-Cota Company in New York. And for 21 years worked for that company until that company disappeared. And they said, goodbye, Jim. All this time, I was a long-term math and science substitute teacher at Ocean Township High School for 22 years, being paid $85 a day. The reason I say that is not as a teacher, but as, I was a teacher of kids. But my distinction and the reason Ocean kept calling me back was because of my approach to education. Not being a teacher, I got some respect from those kids when they said, Mr. G, how did you succeed? And why did you succeed? Not only working for Eastman-Cota Company, I worked for the New Jersey Devils. I was director of game day operations. I started the pro-women's soccer team, now known as Gotham, owned by your now governor. And I would tell the kids, the secret is, get off your butt. There are great students at Neptune High School, the Neptune school system. And they will all tell you, there are not great students in Neptune. Over those 20 years at Ocean Township High School, I saw a marked difference in what students became. There has to be a marked difference in how we approach educating young people. We built this system 100 years ago. I think Horace Mann began it and said, here's how we're going to structure public education. We now have such great new tools that students will look at your teachers and say, I don't need you. Your absentee rate is high. You have students that don't want to come to school. They say, I can make it on my own. Okay, fine, kid. I contend, there has to be a marked difference in how we educate our young people. We have built a behemoth. It's giant. And it's not effective as it should be. I love students. I love teaching. You're doing a great and wonderful job. But we've built kind of a big toll booth, and it has to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Please come forward.
Good evening, board members. My name is Mike Senate. I live in Shark River Hills, 100 Clinton Place. And I guess I'm here for what Jim just was talking about. Matter of fact, I talked to him through emails recently. I was told that we were 14 to 17 million short. But it's actually 25, is that correct?
No. We, I said 25 million was what we've lost over the period since S-2.
Okay, but what is the deficit in the budget? Is it 14 million? Is that correct?
No. Originally, when we had the deficit, it was around 6 to 8 million before we factored in the increases. So while the difference between the adequacy threshold and the adequacy spending, which is how the state calculated how much extra the district could go above the tax levy, they estimated that difference to be 17 million. We did not take that entire 17. We took 13?
13.
A point something, close to 13.
Okay. Okay. Another thing. On Friday, I got an email that the federal government, Trump administration, I guess, released $6 billion. Now, a fellow named Jim Manning, I think he was on, he was either the mayor or was involved in politics in Neptune, said that the only thing that we're going to get out is $100,000. Does anybody know the answer to that? Because if $6 billion, we need 14 or whatever. I'm just kind of...
I think what you're referring to is our federal title money, Title I, Title II, Title III. Those monies are to help us with underachieving low-income students for professional development and for our English as a second language students, Title I, Title II, Title III. We were told to budget for about 75% of that. And then we heard that they put a freeze. So we've been waiting for that release, although we have not been officially notified that we have gotten any money from that. We do count on that grant money.
But you don't know how much it'll be, correct?
We don't know from year to year how much it will be. We have a general idea of what we get. We get about $1 million in those grant monies. But we don't know this year whether we'll get some, none, or all.
Okay. All right. Does a gentleman, Brian Sani, I think he's going to be the committee man or something, he made a, he used to be a tax assessor. And he said that maybe we can raise the taxes on commercial businesses. But I don't think that's a good answer to fill the budget gap. Because then those people are going to be mad. I mean, my tax went up almost $4,000. Gentleman in the back there, his went up $6,000. I know other people in the hills, they went up $7,000 a year. Now, if you do that by five years, that's $35,000, just in the increase on top of what they're paying now. I live on the water. I can see the water from my house. I'm not waterfront, but I'm water view. And I love living over there. It's great. It's clean. It's good neighbors. But it's getting to the point where can you stay there? Are you going to be able to retire there? It's looking like it's not going to happen because it seems like these taxes are just going to keep going up.
It's going to be a struggle.
Okay. All right. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Marinakis. I live at 318 Prospect Avenue. My question or complaint is not about the taxes, but it has to do with the taxes. And what I'm curious to know is, with a 66% graduation rate from the Neptune High School, what have you done to try to increase the attendance rates and the graduation rate? Because I feel like my taxes are going down the toilet. I work hard every single day. I too lived in a very low-income family. But now that I'm successful, I feel like my dollars are being flushed down the toilet because I don't see this as success.
Do you like me to respond?
Yes.
I understand your frustration about the taxes. However, we are not, as Ms. Jackson said, we are not a failing school. Our graduation rate continues to rise. We've worked hard over the last 10 years to make strides in our students' achievement. We are not there yet, but we are growing. For the first time in 22, 23, or 23, 24, we met all of our growth targets for all of our students in all of our groups. You don't want to have these spikes in student achievement that don't, aren't sustainable. You want to have slow and steady increments. And that is exactly what we were doing. You've heard us talk about, in addition to graduation improving, every year we have an Ivy League graduate. Every year we have students...
One graduate? One Ivy League graduate.
That's a lot. That's a lot. We have also a college placement rate that's pretty high. We have programs that prepare our students for careers as well. We have a phlebotomy program where our students take phlebotomy courses from Hackensack Meridian right here at the high school. And once they pass the test, they are placed in the hospital, and then they get tuition reimbursement. So we are doing a very good job with a 52, 53% disadvantage, economic disadvantage rate, a 22% disability rate. We're doing a very good job in educating our students.
And I will also add that Neptune Township was the first district in the state of New Jersey to have an early college high school program. We have graduated, I think we're on our 12th cohort, those students graduate with an associate's degree from Brookdale Community College before they graduate from high school.
I applaud you for your optimism and how well you're doing. But again, I don't see it as success. And I feel as though my tax dollars are being flushed away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, board. My name is Bill Sherman. I live at 341 South Riverside Drive in Neptune. Back in 2022, my taxes went up for the school $2,000. The next year, $2,600. And this year, it went up $6,900. What is going to happen next year? Am I going to get hit again for this? I mean, where does it stop? I know, I went to Neptune High School here. I don't even recognize it. I graduated in '79. Okay? What you guys did here, you got a big swimming pool now. You got all this, I think so much stuff that you wasted money on that people aren't even using. It's another school down on Memorial Drive. I don't even think that's using it. Why can't you sell that property and make up the difference? You know, you're thinking about shutting down Shark River School. Why don't you sell that? All right? I went to Summerfield School. They knocked it down and put a brand-new school up. They didn't need to do that. I don't understand why you guys are spending so much money and you're taking it out on us. So do I expect to be paid another 6, 7, 8, 9, 10,000 next year? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Is that the conclusion of your remarks?
That's the conclusion, yes.
Okay. So, sir, to begin with, I'm going to, I'm going to address some of the comments that you made that are incorrect. As was stated, Neptune was the beneficiary of SDA funds, which allowed us to build the schools, including the pool and the things that you mentioned. They were not taxpayer dollars that were wasted, as you noted, to build those facilities. So taxpayers did not pay for those facilities.
Oh, we're paying for it now.
So...
The notes are due.
So we're, no...
They didn't just give you free money.
It's not notes that are due. We're paying for the maintenance of those facilities.
Paying for the maintenance, right, sure.
So that's number one. Number two was you talked about the tax increase. And what we have been asking our community since at least 2023, and I brought the school scenes just so I could remember to make sure I was speaking correctly. We have been asking our residents, before this happened, to reach out to legislators to ask for an equitable funding formula. That has not happened thus far. So we don't hold a crystal ball. We can't, uh-oh, I got loud all of a sudden. We can't tell what the future will hold in 2025, 26. But what I can tell you, if we don't speak up to demand an equitable funding formula, our taxes will likely increase again. So that's what I can tell you. So we collectively as a community, I can't drive this importance, I can't drive this home enough. If we sit silent and complain on social media and don't talk to the people who write the legislation that impacts all of the school districts, not just in Neptune, but in Monmouth County and the state of New Jersey, then we will find ourselves in this situation or worse in the coming years. So it's all of us. The responsibility is for all of us to speak up. That's the response.
Good enough. Thank you.
And I will note, sir, Ms. Morgan did point it out. I did, I noted this in my remarks, but I didn't say it just now. We cannot sell those buildings. Because as I said in the remarks, if we sell the buildings, the profit goes back to the state. And the buildings must be used for educational purposes. We have tried, we have tried, we have tried, since we closed ECC, to find someone willing to rent the building so that we could generate some revenue. We have not had success. So we do, if you have recommendations of someone, we welcome you to send them to Dr. Crater, and we will communicate with them and try to get that building back online. Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Nancy Phillips. And as y'all know, I am homeless. So I don't have an address. But my previous address for the past 30 years was Neptune. I just had a son who graduated from Neptune last June. I have a son that because of Neptune, my son is headed to William Patterson next month. I personally love the fact that all four of my children went to Neptune. You know, previously, I lived down the hill. You know, I wasn't fortunate enough to live, you know, up the hill or in the gables or Shark River. You know, I'm down the hill with the poor people. You know, I'm down the hill with the single households. You know, I was a single mother with four kids that lived down the hill. Okay? Now, I'm not hating on those who live up the hill. But you also have to realize the people that live up the hill are kind of different than down the hill. The people that live up the hill come from two, the kids come from two-parent households. Okay? Their income is different. I don't think that is right, that the people, you know, that a lot of parents say, well, I'm not going to say my kids are Neptune because it's not diverse. You know, it's too much diversity. What are you saying? That it's too many, too many black people under one roof? Your child isn't good enough to go to a Neptune middle school because it's a lot of black students? Yes, that's what happened. It's a predominantly black town. It's not my fault that the people in Shark River can afford million-dollar houses where the people down the hill is on Section 8. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, we are all residents of Neptune. And our common goal here is for the students. Y'all not the only ones that pay taxes because y'all live in $100,000 houses. I pay taxes out my check. Everybody on the board pays taxes. Y'all sitting up here crying like y'all exempt, like y'all the only ones in America that pay taxes. Welcome to America. And just like the board said, if y'all have a problem with it, write to y'all congresspeople, y'all legislators. Y'all don't never come down here to the board meetings. Y'all only here now for us because of your taxes. I've been to so many meetings and not seen not one parent. Now because your taxes are raised, y'all want to come out in droves. Y'all should be out here all year. Y'all should be out here at homecoming, at football games. Y'all don't come to nothing except when it comes to y'all taxes because y'all live up to hill and y'all too good for your kids to communicate with the kids downhill. I don't care what happened to y'all taxes. My son graduated next.
Hello, board. I'm Tara Samuels, Lana Ellerton. And I want to let you guys know I'm very happy to be a resident of Neptune. Neptune has a lot of good students in there. I work with them. I'm around Neptune. I'm in the high school. I'm in the middle school. I'm well-known. I'm a taxpaying person, too. I have a house on 1528 Eighth Avenue. I just got to do what I got to do. That's the end of it. If y'all don't like it, I'm just going to move out. But I'm going to stay right here where I'm proud to be a Neptune girl, like my daughter. We won the state. We got a lot of kids coming back to Neptune to make Neptune even better. So when they say they don't see it, my, every girl that played on the basketball team were high on the students. High on the students. Two of our girls went to Promise College. So I'm letting you know that Lana Ellerton, that helped make Neptune a star and board is back and bringing kids back to Neptune. The education is very well in Neptune. We deal with Mr. Deco all the time. I don't have any problem. If I can't pay the taxes, taxes, I'm just going to move out. But guess what? I'm going to do what I got to do if I got to work hard for my daughter to sit here and have a good education in Neptune. That's what I'm going to do. So I would like to say thank you. I love you all. I support you all. I think you are wonderful. You guys see me here, I praise you. And if no one don't like it, then go. I, I got a house. I, my stuff went up. It's, this is America. This is what it's all about. So I'm going to let you guys know you guys are doing a good job and I appreciate you. My daughter loves each and one of you guys that's sitting up here at this panel. So that's just how I feel about it. And if it's another meeting, I'm going to come and I'm going to have my daughter speak so she can tell everybody how good Neptune School is. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, yeah, she was. She was.
Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? So please come forward at this time. Seeing none, public comment is closed. My microphone right now.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Mr. Hubbard, can you move our superintendent's report, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent, under superintendent's report as per document A, items 1 through 14, so move.
Second.
It's been, it's been moved by Mr. Hubbard, seconded by Vice President Thompson. Board members, any questions? Ms. Dela Salle, roll call, please.
Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Morgan.
Aye.
Ms. Purrier.
Aye.
Ms. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, can you move our finance items, please?
Yeah, Madam President. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved items recommended by the superintendent under finance as per document B1, items 1 through 10, so move.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Jones, seconded by Mr. Hubbard. Board members, any questions? Ms. Dela Salle, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Morgan.
Aye.
Ms. Purrier.
Aye.
Ms. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, can you move our facilities item, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve item recommended by the superintendent under facilities as per document B2, item 1, so move.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Harris, seconded by Vice President Thompson. Board members, any questions? Ms. Dela Salle, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Morgan.
Aye.
Ms. Purrier.
Aye.
Ms. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. West, can you move our transportation items, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve items recommended by the superintendent under transportation as per document B3, items 1 through 4, so move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. West, seconded by Ms. Jones. Board members, any questions? Ms. Dela Salle, roll call, please.
Ms. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Hubbard.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Morgan.
Aye.
Ms. Purrier.
Aye.
Ms. Thompson.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Purrier, can you move our education special projects items, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve items recommended by the superintendent under education special projects as per document C1, items 1 through 3, so move.